I've been running around Nigeria since, and I've noticed one thing. You see? Yoruba people, when they want to talk, or they want to speak, they're the ones that are the culture. Then, if you look at it now, if I ask you which people they use phone for in Nigeria? Out of all Nigerians, which tribe uses phone the most? Eh? It's a last. Eh? I don't know. How's that? Okay, I'll experiment one thing before I leave. A Yoruba man will buy credit, a Yoruba man will buy credit. By the time he buys the credit and starts calling, this is what you're going to witness. Ah, Fawaduka, ah, the mother of the morrow, eh, hey, Boney, ah, Wadupesa. Eh, so what's happened, I'm not know me, eh, what was happened, no. Eh, only Frataya, we want to want you Frataya. Ah, we pay Tafik, Tafik, he want want, oh, I can't get it, ah, yeah, oh, I can't organize. We want to visit there, ah, go on, eh, eh, Batiwa London, eh, eh, Batiwa London. Ah, you can Bati charge, Bati charge, what charge you, Bati? Oh, Lashy, why you see, oh, eh, so who can hold it, eh? Ah, so who can move, so take credit, it's here, ah, go on.
That's it, so. That is, that's it, so.
Now, and even what, shout, shout. If women don't use mobile phone, it's either they see a finder standing at the bus stop, or they see a finder when they are driving their car, they stop. That is when they use their mobile phone. America, America, you believe, who know, but you know what happened, you see, that's how that. The agent is over, what happened, another company did this, white woman. I don't want this white woman to disappear. It's just, you know, as I'm talking to you, I am in Shaka Top Hotel, I am making up. What's that, that's how that, you want? Did you tell it to me one time, oh, okay, bye, bye. Oh. Finish. How Saman, he should, don't forget How Saman. How Saman does not use mobile phone at all. The only time you see a phone with a How Saman, and it is an expensive phone, iPhone thirteen, you see the How Saman in one corner jumping off. Don't appear, what are you, don't appear, what are you, don't appear, what are you, when I, I didn't run for you for good late. And by the time he brings out his phone, his phone is only meant for calculator. With this, I humbly take my leave, and I hope that you have a wonderful day.
Yes, please, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Comedia, for that time, you had with us. Okay, uh, may I have the permission of our excellency to invite her to have, uh, a work, uh, to have her address, please? Thank you very much, excellency.
Excellency.
First, I have to say, my time. All right. Excellencies, the Chairman Nigel to my right, Chairman with my left, members of the Embassy of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, distinguished citizens, tattooed chief, chair present, official group, and Madam Pastor, just to mention it here. Welcome you all to this, uh, meeting. I don't know how to express my joy, thank you, but let me start by saying, I salute all the pictures in this room. The reason is very simple. There are at least fifteen thousand registered Nigerians in the Netherlands. I'm happy, uh, Mr. Okeke was happy about the turnout, but I was expecting a lot more people. Perhaps sixteen, fifteen thousand registered Nigerians in the Netherlands. And we've done the kind of mobilization we have done. I was worried that there will not be enough seats in this room. But even having stepped out, I want to thank you so much, those that are here, the patriots here, for making our time to be here. I really appreciate you, and I want you to know that I mean what I'm saying. I am grateful. What happens usually is that the people that are in this room typically, they are the ones who don't have any issue that we have to deal with. They are the patriots, they are the ones who understand their sense of this kind of meeting. The others who complain and talk all the time, and sometimes abuse and curse, when you call them for a meeting, they don't show up. So I want to thank you again for making our time to be here, not just being here, but being here on time. Please, can we give ourselves a wonderful round of applause? I really, really appreciate you. Let me take the formal things that are put down, but let me just put it out there straight away, that I'm ready to take any questions that you might put for me after I've finished speaking. It's a lengthy speech because it's the first time we are meeting in person, but I'm going to try and make it as brisk as possible. I want to acknowledge the presence of the Chairman of UNP Netherlands, Mr. Adona Okeke, and members of his executive committee. I take this opportunity to congratulate the Espo, who will return on her post for a job well done at a recent election. Please, can we clap? They make a lot of difference to the Nigerian community, and I believe their reelection is well deserved. I want to also acknowledge the presence of the Chairman of Nigerian Diaspora Organization in Netherlands, Mr. Stanley Blue, who spoke earlier on, and members of his executive committee. I greet all the tattooed men and women, ladies and gentlemen. I welcome you to our first in person town hall meeting, since I assume my duty as ambassador in the Kingdom of Netherlands. If you recall, I came in on the seventeenth of May, two, twenty twenty one, and presented my letter to the King on the second of June, twenty twenty one. Since then, we've hosted two virtual meetings, and a lot of you have also paid me coffee calls at the embassy. If I must say something about Nigerians in Netherlands, is the fact that they are fantastic people, they are honorable people, they are generous people. The reason I can tell you that we, is because luckily, this is my second outing as an ambassador. Every time anyone came to pay me a coffee visit, they came with at least a bouquet of flowers. I appreciate your generous spirit, and I acknowledge it publicly. Thank you very much. These meetings we've had in the past virtually have enabled me to interact with you toward different issues. But being here today means that you can put a face, at least when we start to take a few pictures, behind this mask, you can put a face to my person. And, um, we can get a lot more done by just answering your question in this form. We chose Amsterdam today because we believe that Amsterdam houses the largest population of Nigerians in the Netherlands. For the next time, we may be moving to the next biggest city, which is Rotterdam. After that, we'll go to other places for town hall meetings. Our aim is to be able to make ourselves accessible to you and to reach as many of you as possible. Town hall meetings are actually pre-scheduled to take place every quarter, so that there are not too many that you get boring, but there are often enough that you have all your hard questions answered. So we have one every quarter. The first one was in December, Prince of Cape, that should have been in December. Now, because I am putting my best foot forward on your behalf, making Nigeria look good, and taking my work seriously, and showing them that we can do it. So this is all I ask of you, in your own sphere of influence, do your best and make me look good. I will continue to do my best and make you look good. Are you with me?
Yes.
Yes. So I will move on to immigration matters. I want to say to you that, um, the very story about the recent situation with passport issues. I've been calling the, what you call CJIS, Control of General Immigration, for that day. We have a backlog of over two thousand right now. Yesterday, we only got five hundred. What we do is we flag from the late, the earliest, you know, those who captured in February, February, that's where we are. We do that, and then both, they promised me, and by God's grace, this, this coming week, by God's grace, this coming week, they said they will give me another, but I don't want to mention the figure until I see it. But we got five hundred yesterday.
Okay.
What we went to do is to put pressure on the supplied people so they give us enough to flag the passport so that we can be, um, in the current mode of giving out passports. But I want to say this, the reason we have so many applicants coming to our embassy is because of the kind of service. A lot of people come from Germany. Ninety, is it ninety percent of Nigerians? Eh? What's the percentage?
Close to that.
About ninety-five percent of the applicants we staff are actually from Germany. But we want to say this to you in house. When you come to the embassy and you leave here, please, make sure you mention it. Because we prioritize the passports of our people in the Netherlands. Because they are the people who are here to serve primarily. If not for these people coming from Germany, we wouldn't have the kind of pressure that we have. And people come from London, Zed, they come from Portugal, they come from all over the place. Belgium, France, all kinds of, uh. Yes, I see pastor and pastor Misses Zelo, who is continentale, who is CEO of the Deep Fish Channel of God World. Please, are we good, Mr.? Thank you, sir, thank you, sir, the way I'm able, thank you for coming. All right, so, talking about that, it's been a bit tough, but we're working hard. And I dare say that I have one of the best immigration attorneys. That's, uh, Mr. Akil Abi, yes, they are very patient, and they do the best that they can. Awa Joku, Wa Joku, Wa Joku. Okay, so. But talking about that, we've had issues with applicants who come to do passport in Europe, especially with our neighbors. A lot of people, they come to the embassy and they start making noise on the street. They don't come with their children, and they litter our streets. In fact, they do, the, the worst part is some people will remove their baby's passport. Even though we have those goods within the embassy, they will drop it in the compound of our neighbor. You know the sad part, like I told at, at the beginning, the people that I should be telling this, they are not in this room. But the reason I'm mentioning it at all is that you will help me, if they start complaining, that we now give them code of conduct slip when they come to the embassy. It will help me explain to them the reason why we are. Because I've had, had to have several meetings with our neighbors, complaining about the unruly behavior of some of our people. It's not encouraging, but we have to keep trying. So please, you will tell them that, this is what happened, though, that's why we give out, anybody coming now, we will explain to you. And please, don't make noise on the street, this is a reservation neighborhood. Number two, when you finish eating, don't drop your stuff on the road. Don't block our neighbor's compound. These are things that we have on these papers. And, uh, so if you are confronted with it, don't feel insulted. Just take it and comply, and if you see anybody not complying, please, help me beg them to comply. So because those things cause us problems. The, one of the things I did when I came was to make sure that you don't pay any unnecessary charges for any quarters, even for those issuing visas on our behalf, we call them O I S. So those charges have been streamlined, and you don't need to pay anything. The only other advice I'll give is any time you are going for visa, in case you are one of those Nigerians who have renounced your citizenship and you need to get a visa. Every document you need, please bring them from home. Because if you don't bring them, how much do they charge for a photocopy?
Five euro.
Five euro.
Five euro. You know it will not cost you five euro if you do it yourself. And I don't tell them to help you fill the form that you can fill. Those are the things they charge you. And if they charge you for that, we cannot say anything about that. But there will be no unnecessary charges. And I want to advise, uh, everybody, when you get back home, check your passport and check your children's, your Nigerian passport, and see when they are going to expire. If it's not up to six months anymore, by six months to expiration, please begin the process. The reason is, you will not be under any pressure. Because as bad as things are, we will still be able to give you your passport in three months. So we want to advise and encourage, but six months to expiration, begin the process. And then, please, there's no need to do, do money. Those appointments are accessible, once you've made your payment on the portal, the next thing it will take you to is the appointment page. Go there and make an appointment and come. Seriously speaking, if you have an emergency, you can come to the embassy, and we will attend to you. Or please, if you don't have an emergency, don't say you have an emergency. Because it will create a problem for us, having to deal with so many supposed emergencies when you don't have. So our encouragement is six months to expiration, please put in your passport. And when you are picking your passport, please try and pick it in person. If you must use a proxy, make sure it's somebody reliable, somebody who knows how to take care of their own things. Because we've had issues of people picking other people's passports, that at the end of the day, they, it gets missing. Is it, is it our fault? No, but then, people will come there and start crying, and see, we gave the passport to the person we said we should give it to. The person lost the passport, how does that become a problem? But what we do is we now have to apply for a new one, but because it's now a lost passport, we cannot issue that passport until Abuja approves. And before Abuja can approve, it's a lot of stress, because, and the reason is simple. They know that some people do fraud with their passport, they will not declare it missing, and then they won't get another one. So they have to be absolutely sure, there's a genuine case, before they give us approval. So these are the things we need to bring to your attention. Um. Also, in order to be able to reach you, uh, effectively, we've created many avenues on which you can reach us. One of them is through our social media handles, uh, social security. Madam Pedjuk, please, can we share the card? Who would like you to follow us on social media? They are going to share the cards to you. You've given them?
Yes.
Already?
Yes.
Okay, there's a small card that you were given when you came. Did you get? Some people didn't get, please, come to the phone and start from the phone, and give me one so I can show them. At the back, you have our Facebook handle, our Twitter, our Instagram, our website, and, and so on and so forth. The reason is, number one, you know what is happening, like this meeting would have advertised it on it. But because I have a number of a few people, I sent it to them directly. But this is our way of reaching you. If you follow us, this, this is, those social media handles, they are right at the back of this card. Please follow us if you are on any of these, uh, social media handles. The other thing which we didn't put there, that we would, I'd like to put there, is this form. How to get the link of this form? This is for the registration that the Chairman, Mr. Okeke, talked about. We're trying to know how many of us are actually here, and have your contact. We're not going to do anything evil with your information. So, if them, there's no Netherlands authority that will ask me to give them the information of my citizens, and I will give them. It's not possible. Even they will not give your information to us because of privacy laws. So please, if you've not registered with the embassy, we have this form set today. You can request for it, and we will give it to you. So, but talking about registration. And the other issue on passports, before I move on from passport, is that some of you don't know where to go when you need to, maybe apply for a passport, or apply for a visa, or the renunciation process, or how to get ITC, how to do legalization of documents. We've put everything on a sheet of paper, and if you are not familiar with any of those things, and you need the services, you can pick a copy at the reception desk. If you already know, there's no need to pick a copy, because we only made like maybe fifty or hundred copies for people who might be interested to know this information. That is that for you. Then, since I arrived, we have this twenty-four hour emergency line. And I'd like to dictate the number. God forbid, in case of any emergency, on a weekend or something, and you need to reach us at the embassy, is plus three one, six eight six, four nine three, six one eight. Plus three one, six eight six, four nine, six one eight. Please bear in mind that is a human being that is holding this number and not a machine. Why am I saying so? Please don't call at two A M. And say, I just wanted to hear your voice. I wanted to be sure that this emergency line is real. This emergency line is real, and the woman holding it is a married woman. If you now have to be a man, and you call her in the night, and her husband is there, and she has to start explaining that, my name is Mr. Stanley Benudan, who is that? Please, oh, oh. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, to the glory of God, since we arrived, the rejection of authenticated Nigerian documents such as birth certificate, marriage certificates by the host authorities, has been soughted to a large extent for, for documents that are not paid. So you should be rest assured that your documents will no longer be rejected, because we've dealt extensively with the matter with N I M. The other issue with our people coming from Ukraine is that we at the embassy would like to know if you have anybody who has issues from Ukraine, they're having issues and all. You either talk to us or talk to the U N P people. This is Madam Pastor. She's known to be recognized. She knows the people that you, can link you to if you know any relatives that are from Ukraine.
Yeah.
Please, thank you very much.
God bless you.
They will sort them out. We are still talking to the government to see how they can take care of one of our students who are, like, wanting to complete their education, maybe one more year of medical school and all. It's very difficult for this country, but we are talking to them to see if they have anything to offer, especially medicine. Because even regular, to get into medicine in Netherlands is almost an impossible thing for a foreigner. So to not talk of coming to complete final year, I don't know if that is possible. But we are engaging with them, and if we have any information, we will give us. All right, we've already talked about, um, registration. The place that you can get that form online, the one I showed you before, is W W dot Nigeria Embassy, the egg dot N L. That's a normal website, and on it, you will find a script that links you to registration. Coming to the issue of N I M, I know it has begun. I know it has begun in Netherlands, but the bottom line of why we are not getting involved is because we have been given a communication about a different company before. And then the, this company came to say they are the ones, and it's not the ones that they have communicated with us about. Unfortunately, we had written to Nigeria many times to get clarification, and we have not received doctor now. That's the truth. There's no need to sugarcoat the story. So if you are doing your N I M, where they are doing it now, and it's coming out well, I wish you the best. When they communicate with us about the company that is responsible for Netherlands, put it out there. Thank you.
Yes.
I know that Nigerians also have been clamoring to be part of the electoral process, and right this day. I'm wishing that we could vote in Diaspora. Unfortunately, as you are aware, the National Assembly did not approve. But we're trusting God that we will keep pushing, and that in years to come, it will be possible. Every country starts little by little. I had my colleague, Ambassador Okere, telling me that there are only a couple of embassies where they also can vote abroad, and even Netherlands, not one of them. So, prayers in London can vote in London, and a few other countries, but not all countries. And it's basically because of a lack of trust, that's the trust that we have. We cannot trust that, ah, example now me that I'm in A P C. If I bring votes from Netherlands, whether I will unload it with the figure that will help A P C, that's the, that's the bottom line of the problem. So, but hopefully, we try to get there. We're talking about politics and leadership. Please, do, do your best to get involved. If we good people keep standing by, then we'll continue to be led by each other's hands. So. I want to encourage you to please get involved. The only thing I can promise you is just to reiterate what President Gauri said on his broadcast on June twelve, that we are going to have a fair and fair election. And I can testify that the election was fair and fair, because I participated. It was very, very, there was no problem of any sort. Except both by, have you? Which brings me, wait, let me, let me tell you something. Beyond the reality. You know the reality of our life. Is that the left term is very, very true all over the world. And they do both by in different ways all over the world. When I, when I talk, I want to talk my gap now as an ambassador and talk to you, especially the Nigerian youth. When you are ready to take over, the left term of getting to position in Nigeria, you will begin to understand the intricacies of our elections actually work. Our elections are compared and won or lost. For one, in a data small as it, we have two thousand four hundred and forty-three polling units. The implication of that is that each party must put a party agent in each polling unit. And because they are rendering a service for the day, you must pay them. If you don't pay them, another party will pay them.
Yes.
And they will look away and give your vote to that party. So, when the youth want to take over, you must start by understanding the structure of our elections alone. That's the reality. So, when somebody gets up from a monster's head today who has never been a minister of and says I want to be president, I laugh.
Ah, yeah.
So, if I wasn't an ambassador to God today, maybe I'll be leading a youth mobilization drive.
Yes.
But I would teach you the basics of our elections and run the one. I will say to you that each of you will contribute so, so, so amount of money because you need money to run an election. Let me stop there.
That's the corruption.
This thing is on Facebook. It's not a matter of corruption. There's infrastructure for election. You need money for rally, you need money for also.
Sensitization, not corruption.
No, but this is my main point to you. It's not sit back and complain.
It's just how it is.
Get involved. I got involved. That's why I'm an ambassador. Get involved. By offering service and buy and buy, good people will emerge in positions and make a difference. Amen. On the issue of non issuance of visas by Dutch embassies in Nigeria, they are working as seriously on it. It's very, it's not something I find funny at all. And working very hard to make sure they correct this protocol. So that the Dutch embassy in Abuja and Lagos will be the ones doing their business. We will not need to go to embassy of Belgium or embassy of consulate of France or travel to Ghana or the United Republic. We are taking on the matter seriously, we are taking it seriously. And if you have any influence anywhere in this country, talk about it all. Complain. You need that critical mass. The problem we have as a people is that we like complaining in the room or with our friends. Where matters we not talk. Please complain.
Yes.
And you can be sure that it's on the front burner with us and we'll resolve it. Then for those who are arriving in Netherlands, especially as students, we are preparing a student guide. I don't know how far they've gone, but I've been expecting them to come back to me in a minute. Um, this is Mr. Anno Luha for I do here. He's not. Okay, he's one of the people working on it. And hopefully, when, once they do it, who will publish it. And we can give it to, and then it will also be available online. I will share with people who are coming in the Netherlands newly. Alright, um, my note here says I should encourage you to be law abiding. Yes, and I'm encouraging you, but I want to commend you. Since I came to this kind of question, I don't know, maybe it's that they don't inform people. They tell them not to inform me. I've not been called worse. And it's been over a year that a Nigerian was arrested somewhere. You see that they are arresting them and they are not telling me, please tell me.
No, we are not abiding.
They are not arrested. We are not abiding, please can we clap for ourselves? Honestly, I'm very happy that Nigerians are doing well in this country and will continue to do well. So, I want to encourage you to not only do well here, but also to remember people back home. That's my next point. Every opportunity we have, let's share each of what we have. Let's give back. You may not be able to build a classroom in your primary school, or you may be able to help somebody start a sewing job or get them bathing to a bath. You just to empower people back home. And then this is the point at which I'm supposed to also appreciate for the diaspora remittance. Nigeria understands it, Nigeria appreciates it. Diaspora remittances is like five times foreign direct investments into Nigeria. So, the money of the work you do is making a impact back home. For this, we are very grateful. Thank you so much. Okay, but I just want to sound a bit of caution as far the understanding many people have of the work we do in the embassy. Some people think I'm their student education officer. People back home, they'll be telling me that which university will I recommend? And I patiently educate them that please tell your child to go online to search out universities, universities in Netherlands are good. And then some people say I should have them find scholarships. And I say, well, what they do here is not through the embassy. People have to do it individually and then they give it to them. And some people think also that the money we collect for passport, that we collect it at the embassy. How many people think is the embassy collecting the money?
They won't risk.
No, okay, thank you, I'm not thinking so. Because it's very directly to Nigeria Immigration Service. We don't see the money. So, when people come thinking that there's some money has been given to us and we're not sharing it, please bear it in mind that.
National key.
In which we are supposed to even have, we have to believe God for it many times. Okay. Alright, the other important thing here is the fact that when you succeed, we would like to know. When you are doing well, I don't care whether it's in music or sport or in academia in your place of work, tell us. Let us drive you back. One, later Tumaidobi Phelé, he said to me, he said, if you call your own property a rag, nobody will call it a fantastic commandment on your behalf. So personally, I have a blog called Nigerian James. On that blog, I share everything good about Nigeria and Nigerians. And then when it comes to our people in the Netherlands, if you do well anywhere, your child just graduated with first class. Do yourself, you just got promoted at I C C or something nice. Or you just had a set of triplet. Tell us, yes, you are laughing. Who will share it? Who will share your success story? Want to know that you are doing well and you are succeeding. We know we can write to the universities to tell us which of our students got first class. Just I've heard it before in Humbridge. Or privacy laws, they will not tell us. So, when you tell us, we will celebrate them. Our, one of our children became miss all and recently. Yes, we celebrated it. So, if you are doing anything good and you want us to know, we'll be glad to know. And believe me, every Nigerian citizen is important to me. Yesterday, was it yesterday or two days ago? I went for the graduation of Navy Lieutenant Daniel Malo at the Netherlands Defence College. He was one of the maybe nineteen participants that came from different African country. And they just sent me an invitation that one of your citizens will be graduating. If at that day, the twentieth of June, June was so busy for me, but I went. And to the glory of God, when I got there, he was like the valedictorian of the sex. He was the best and he was a class coordinator. So, apart from the certificate, they also gave him like a medal. I was so proud. But I went because of that one person. And we shared it on our social media. That's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Don't think your success is too small for us to appreciate. It's all these little things that add up. You understand me? And believe me sincerely, people that should look at those pages, they may not come there unlikely, but they're looking at it. Because of the feedback I get, people in Nigeria, people governors, they will tell me, oh, we saw you on Kinicon. I say, huh, you came to that page or you didn't click like or anything. People were, they are looking. Social media has become important in this day and age. Even diplomacy cannot be done outside of social media. The reason is before a news is sent by what we used to call siteel before and ten legs or diplomatic bag, we've already shared it on YouTube, on Twitter, everything. So, we cannot walk outside of how the world is working today. So, that's why we use social media. So, please follow us. I think I'm beginning to round off. But before I round off, I just want to say if you want to apply for passports or other consular matters, they have the mission's website. I want to thank you before I sit down for coming to this interesting hour meeting. And I trust that by August, when we meet again, it will be a larger group and we will all be happy. Today, we're going to be sharing some food, what is packed, so that if you don't want to eat here, you can eat later. And it will come with a bottle of water and a drink. I hope the drink in it will be to your satisfaction, but believe me, it's not beer. And it's not, what that is, the drink in this country?
Amigé.
No, not your coffee. It's not your Daniel's. It's not your Amigé. It's water and juice. It's not yogurt. So, don't be annoyed. Maybe next time, when everything opens up a bit more, we'll be able to spread the table in a larger hall and be able to meet. I want to urge you to feel free to ask me questions. Please try not to repeat what I already said.
Exactly.
We don't waste our time. How to apply for visa, passport, M I D S C travel certificate, uh, renunciation process, legalization of documents, we have every ticket here. It's also on our website. But because of a lot of people like myself, that's why we printed it out. If you don't have and you want, you can still collect at the admin place. Then, if you want to register here today, this is the paper. You can pick it up as well. Otherwise, if there are other questions that you would like to ask me, feel free to do it. I'll first of all take all the questions and write them down, then I will answer them, okay? I want to wish all of you a wonderful time in the kingdom of the Netherlands and pray that you will succeed on all fronts. And that even your generations after you will rise and call you blessed. On account of you, Nigeria will be lifted. And when Nigeria is lifted, Africa will be lifted. We will all do well to the honor and glory of our God in the name of Jesus. Thank you all so much. God bless you.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. That detail and incisive address, I think many of us, if not all, have learned or witnessed from what I experienced just there to host. So, now wasting much of your time again, go straight to the next item on the program is the comments, questions and observations. So, these are what we are going to do it. You have any, what I just said, want to say anything, just raise up your hand. Bring the mic to you so that you can ask a question. We are going to take like requests at the time so that I can attend to it. And after, bring questions again, we take another thing. Okay, so, when you bring microphone to you, say your, say your name first, then where you are staying, then you ask your question for documentation purposes. So, we found one there.
Yeah, then one, two, three, four. So, one, two, three.
Okay, don't worry, we are coming to all of you, just make it brief so that we are asking your questions. How many people do you have here? They are coming.
I can stay there and help you.
Alright.
My name is Mohamed Ibrahim. I'm a graduate student of Energy Conservation at European Energy Academy, Oregon. I just want to make some comments about our excellency and just support. Talking about the student guide and some information for people asking us scholarship and other stuffs. We have a kind of youth community, I consider Nigerian youth in the Netherlands. So, I consider a lot of demography of the people in the group or in that committee are mostly youth studying here in the Netherlands. And among the youths, someone in the group was able to put up a website called mynigeria.nl. I repeat again, mynigeria.nl. It's a baby website that was posted a few weeks ago and in the next few weeks, it will be. Sorry, please, can you hear me now? Okay, maybe I should restart myself again since a lot of you understand because of the business. My name is Mohamed Ibrahim. I'm a postgraduate student of Energy Conservation at European Energy Academy, Oregon, collaboration in Hanzo Universal Applied Science. I just want to like support what our excellency said. We appreciate her for organizing this kind of event, even though there's a lot of oppression from other people that did the force of its kind. We have a forum called Nigerian Youth in the Netherlands and it's a kind of community for a lot of students studying here in the Netherlands. And the platform has bring a lot of Nigerian youth together. And in the forum, we, we have someone that maybe take a bold step to post a website called mynigeria.nl. Maybe you can give us a text. It's open now, it's still a baby website, no much more content of information here. But in the next few weeks, a lot of information will be on the platform. So, a lot, probably people asking my excellency about scholarships, students, whatever, a lot of stuffs will be put in over here. That is number one. Then, number two, when organizing such kind of events, even though in our country in Nigeria, the demographic of a lot of people are the youth. And I can see most of the organizing committee and the people I've seen around, the demography or the number of the youths is very minority. So, in order to organize, to bring in a lot of youth into this platform together, I think when organizing such kind of events, they should look into including a lot of Nigerian students. Because then they have much more numbers, we can really motivate ourselves to be here. We can really motivate ourselves to be here. That's the thing. Number three, I want to talk about what Mr. Stan there, sorry, I don't know your name, sir. Mr. Stanley, what he said about the knowledge transfer. It's something I would like to like draw attention of the ambassador, probably to collaborate with some of our ministers, most especially the ones in these four sectors. Ministry of Agriculture, Health, Information Technology. Because I'm part of. Because I'm part of a program in continuing development for diaspora that is being engineered by international organization of migration in the heart. A time comes that a lot of transfer station back in Nigeria, they see this program more of like as a stress. For them to collaborate with we participating in the program from here in the Netherlands because it's so difficult to get their attention, to organize session, to do a lot of stuffs that would enhance the knowledge transfer in which we are trying to like support them with. So I, it's something I, at a point like the transfer station I've worked with here, two of them were very collaborative. But I had issues one when it comes to organizing the session. So it's something I would like probably maybe the U N P or Mother Body or the ambassador probably collaborate with the agencies back in Nigeria. This is a knowledge transfer, it's a benefit for our country, it's a benefit for people to be resourceful in their duty so that you can make it a win-win. This is all I have to say. Thank you so much.
I'll collect it again.
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Glada Mahassan from Eskeri. Um, first, I would like to talk about, um, comment during your address about.